Okay, thank you all for coming tonight and to SSC TV 3 for...
Okay, thank you all for coming tonight and to SSC TV 3 for organizing this forum. We have five candidates for city council here tonight. Kyle Bunker, Misty Newell, Ryan Christie, Dawn Seibert, and Marshall Sanders. So, they have drawn numbers in advance so that we have a random order that they will be answering questions and we will rotate, so each of them have the same opportunity to answer the question first or last, however you might look at that as being advantageous. So, we have ten questions that we will go through tonight. If you could keep your responses to two minutes, I will let you know when two minutes has passed. If you haven't completed your answer, if you could try to wrap it up, that would keep us all on a schedule so that we're not here all night long, but have the opportunity to hear a good answer. We have ten questions. We've also got a couple of questions from the floor that I think you'll find will be answered in the prepared questions, but we are allowing those who have something that they would specifically like to ask to write that and submit it on a notepad here, or a note card. So, we'll start with a general question that gives you the opportunity to explain why you're running for city council. Misty, why should citizens vote for you?
Okay, so why should you vote for me? I have, I feel like I have a lot of experience in a lot of different areas that could actually help the council with making decisions. First of all, I manage as many as twenty-eight employees at one time, so when there's an employee issue that comes up, I feel like I'll be able to help figure out what the solution needs to be in that department. Also, I manage several different departments, so I'm in charge of the budget in many different departments, so the budget therefore will not be something that I'm not somewhat familiar with. Policies and procedures are probably pretty close to the code of conduct that the city has and how to use them, so I am pretty familiar with that. I know how the chain of command works and how to initiate it. I do fairly well with writing and speaking skills, and I can relate concerns or issues to the public. I will keep an open mind to all citizens and their concerns. You will know where I stand, as I don't really see why I would have to abstain from a vote, you'll know where I stand by a yes or no vote. I'm not afraid to speak my mind on issues, but only issues that I have researched. I have attended several months of city council meetings, and I know the current agenda and what's going on. And I also know how audits work. I understand the budget, and I understand that if it says you have fifty thousand in your budget, that that doesn't necessarily mean that you have fifty thousand dollars in cash flow. So, I do understand things like that as well.
Next question, why should citizens vote for you?
I'm Ryan Christie. For some of you, some of you that may not know me, I was appointed to city council three years ago, so I've had a little bit of time on council. I work here in town, I live here in town. I'm vested. The line of work that I do, electrical, plumbing, heating and air, you know, I kind of know a little bit about what the city guys have, have going on. I'm around every, every day, driving around. If you've watched council meetings or have gone to the council meetings, you know that I speak my mind and will hold employees accountable to doing their job, so.
For anybody who doesn't know me, my name's Kyle Bunker. I've only lived in St. John for two and a half years, but in that time, I've recognized that St. John's a great community. The reason I want to be on city council is I want to see the town continue to improve. I think it's a great community. I plan on being here long term, and I want to see it through. I want it to be a community that everyone is proud of, and that's why I'm running, and that's why I would like to get your vote.
I'm Marshall Sanders. I've been on the council for four years now. I think the reason that I would benefit being back on the council is I do own a business, own a house, have four kids, I'm vested in the town. I want to make this place better so that we can retain our youth here in the long run, give them something to come back to, to continue to grow the town, do what's best for the community and the citizens, and just take another step forward and keep going the route that we're going.
My name is Dawn Seibert. I've lived here for almost fifteen years. We moved back to town to be closer to family. Our daughter has gone to school in St. John. I've learned to love this town, to make things better. I have common sense, I have an open-mindedness, and I am looking to better this community with my thoughts and everything that goes along with it. I also look forward to listening to my constituents and what they have to say, and go from there. And I hope that you all vote for me on city council.
Thank you. The second question, when you think of the future of St. John, what goals do you have for our community, and what could city council do to get us closer to that goal? When you think of the future of St. John, what goals do you have for our community, and what could city council do to get us closer to that goal? Ryan?
You know, I think, I think one of the things is improving the housing, you know, Stafford County Economic Development works with citizens to, you know, looking to build houses. And I think the city, you know, has bought some properties over, over time, as far as from the sheriff's auction, and some, some houses that maybe need to be torn down, and making open lots where someone could go in and build eventually if they want to. You know, that's, that's something that we need, need to keep up. Everything I hear from people when they come to town, they just moved to town, they had a hard time finding a house, whether it's, whether it's to rent or just buy a house, you know, I, I think that may open the door up to someone else in town already, you know, maybe wanting to build a house. And then their house possibly come up for sale for someone else that's just moving to town. So, it's one of the things.
I think improvement on the infrastructure, continue to do that is huge. I know the current council has looked at possibly doing some strategic planning. They've looked in, I think from contacted Wichita State, and they're looking at that. I think that is important, where we can identify where our weaknesses are, and then budget to try to improve those weaknesses and continue to improve this town. Like I said, I think there's a lot of pride in this town. We want it to be a good-looking town, clean town, and I think continuing to improve the infrastructure is, is huge.
I think that some of what both Ryan and Kyle both said, you know, as far as the infrastructure and the housing in this town, some of the other things I'd like to see in the future is, you know, keeping what businesses we have and doing something to advance forward to bring new business to town as well. But that also goes along with housing. You have to have housing, you have to have good infrastructure. So, I would say businesses, keeping what we have and trying to bring more in would benefit the community.
I haven't lived here my whole entire life. I've lived here for fifteen, almost fifteen years. I do have experience out in other communities of St. John. I do bring open-mindedness, common sense, and I am willing to work with people and keep the line of communication open. Infrastructure is one of the biggest things. My goal, I would have to do more research, and I am not opposed to that. My biggest other thing is keeping our police force going here. We do need a police force in St. John, and that's one of my biggest platform things. So, anyways, there you go.
My biggest thing is infrastructure, and I think some of you have heard me preach census, census, census to this. By filling out our census, that is how we receive funding back into St. John in the form of grants. And the things that we need, like our streets, our sewer lines, our water lines, things like that that need work on, they take a lot of money, and pretty much the only way to get it done correctly and as efficiently as we can is to be able to get some of those grants. So, I would like to keep kind of poaching to everybody that we need everybody to fill out that census. Yes, it's long, yes, it's a pain, but if that means that you're going to get money back into your town to help your town be the town you want it to be, is it not worth thirty minutes of your life? Just think about that. Community is the next thing in general that I want to talk about. I feel like we need to bring community back. I hear some of the elderly people talking about how, when they were back in their younger days, when there was a storm that came by, everybody got in their trucks and they helped get all the tree limbs and stuff picked up. I feel like we need to bring some of that back and help everybody have pride in our community. So, kind of what I would like to do is, is try to do like a community workday, and yes, I know we've had them, and yes, I know we haven't had very much attendance, but consistency is the key to so many things in life. Yes, we can get discouraged very easily, but if we just keep at it, maybe this time we'll have three people, next time maybe five people, next time maybe fifteen people. And then for people to realize that every age can help with this. So, if you're young, guess what? You can take the leaves, the bags of leaves to the truck. You can pull up and you can take the, the limbs to the truck. If you're an elderly individual, you can bring a chair, or we can provide a chair, and you can take the bulbs out and hand them to the people as they're planting them, or take the flowers out. Or let's say you can't make it, well, let's just say you're on Facebook, you can help us advertise. So, basically, there's something for everyone to do, even if you're not there that day helping. But consistency is the key to put us all back together for a community that we can be proud of.
Our third question, we'll go to Kyle first. Questions for this forum were solicited in advance from the public, and a number of them expressed concerns about cleaning up yards, dilapidated houses, and lawn mowing. In fact, the two questions that have been submitted relate to, is there policy on the books about junk or untagged vehicles, and enforcement of city's residential code before a property can be sold or rented? So, the question is, do you think city code is adequate, and what are your thoughts on how it can be enforced?
Of course, I haven't read the city code word for word, but I do think it's adequate. I do think we can continue to improve to enforce it. I know, I think Jamie's started some of that and is working towards that, but it is complex to enforce the code, because it's going to take time and preparation to make sure we have everything in line to enforce, enforce a certain issue, and it takes money to do it, too. And so, we have to identify what codes we want to enforce and how to enforce them, and like I said, it's not an easy job, but it is something that is very important to our
I know for like the last four years that I've been on council, we have a lot of city codes that have not been updated. I know that we're in the process of doing that, cleaning them up, making them easier. The housing, dilapidated buildings, what a lot of people don't understand is that stuff takes up to six months or a year to clean up one property. It takes a long time, a lot of lawyer's fees, it does get rather expensive to clean one property. So, by trying to enforce the codes, which we have been doing, and getting the landowners or property owners to do it themselves, works out a whole lot better than going through the court system. But I do know that it has been done, it's something that we will, I would continue to do if I was re-elected, and helping keep the town clean and do whatever we can.
I think we need to take pride in our city, in our community, period. As far as the codes and stuff go, I've done a lot of research. A lot of the codes that we have are neighbor against neighbor. Back to the police force, I think that some of the things, depending on what codes go on, should be enforced by them. That being said, also, I think our city employees should be... You guys have to understand, I'm not great at public speaking, so you'll have to excuse me. I think that instead of neighbors going against neighbors, we should have a different filing of codes and going from there. We should all take pride in our community. We should take pride in our yards, we should take pride in everything that is St. John,
As far as city code, I'm not a hundred percent for sure what it says stated on that, but I do know that Jamie has been working on enforcing that. I think it came out in our city bills the other day, not too long ago, that we were needing to get stuff cleaned up. I feel like, you know, just me personally, if I go outside and I work in my yard, when I'm done, I might, I'm, before I start, I might not really want to get out there and work in that yard, but when I'm done, I feel such a sense of pride in my own yard. And so, I think if everybody were to get out there and do a little bit of that, everybody would start feeling a little bit better about their community. So, am I for the junk getting cleaned up? Yeah. Am I for the houses getting tore down that need to be done? Yes. Does it need to be done correctly? Yes. So, just sit back and be patient, things are working.
It, it all pretty much starts with pride, having pride in your, in your house that you've, you've paid for, your yard, for one, you know, people coming to town to look at the town, or coming to town for a ballgame that see, you know, what does St. John look like, do I want to move here? You know, another thing is, if you, if you buy a house in town, if you're trying to sell a house in town, you have your, your neighbor that maybe doesn't look as good, maybe kind of distracting for someone that wants to buy your house, or you, you want to buy another house, but something else it is, is it's dangerous, you know? If you have a car hanging from a tree, you know, working on it in the yard, that's, that's a problem. You know, if, if you have something in your backyard, someone could fall in, a kid, kid goes over there and falls in, in a hole, you know, there, we have ordinance in place for a reason, and I think, I think Jamie and everybody in the city has been, has been working very hard at that, so.
Leon? The fourth question goes to Marshall first. The budget is one of the primary responsibilities of the city council. What do you know about the budget, both in terms of what income comes into the city and what do we spend it on?
The majority of our money that comes into the city is generated by the electric department, which is also another big contributing factor of our expense, buying the electricity. But that also covers ninety percent probably of payroll, equipment. That is basically the go-to. Our electric department is what basically funds everything else, outside of the taxpayers' money that's also involved in it. You know, I'm, I'm not the greatest with numbers, but I pay attention. I do know what we spend every month, what we bring in every month, and it, it takes a lot to figure out a budget as big as what we deal with, right around three point one million dollars. So, I mean, it takes a lot every year, and I think budgeting money for the next ten years on certain projects is the route that it needs to go from here for improving our infrastructure and other things like that.
Honestly, I don't know what our budget is. I am very interested to find out what our budget will be, and I am very looking forward to working with our budget and learning everything. As far as infrastructure goes, that is one of my major, major concerns. Not to place blame, but infrastructure has not been a main concern in the last ten, twenty years. If it was, we wouldn't have the infrastructure that we have now. Like I said before, I don't know the numbers, but I am willing and ready and open-minded to look and look forward to learning how everything goes in St. John.
I know that a couple of city council meetings ago, they had the company here that we get our electricity from and was visiting about different things, and that's how I learned that that's our number one generated income for the city, is through our electricity. Other than that, I don't know a whole lot on the budget yet. I know that it's big numbers, and sometimes that can be kind of scary, but you got to learn to break them down a little bit to make them a little more feasible to calculate. And so, I'm sure if I am chosen to get onto city council, that is something that I will pick up on fairly quickly.
As Marshall said, and Misty touched on a little bit, you know, our, our electric revenue is, is one of the major reasons our, our budget is so, so big, you know? It, it helps out so much. So, one of the things that we have to keep in mind is, you know, keeping our employees, our, our linemen's, you know, our linemen in our power plant up to snuff, you know, that's, that's very important to the city, you know? Without that, that, that's a huge part of our budget. And, you know, we've, we've crunched the numbers and looked at it over the last several years on our budget, and, and, you know, we're, we've done the best with it we can, and, you know, there's not, not overspending in any, any other department, but...
I think it's important that going forward, you know, try to meet with the department heads, make sure they have the resources they need, but at the same time, you know, we don't need to overspend. I think the budget's, it's complex, and we need to identify what resources we have available, get them in the right places, spend the money wisely, and then, you know, at the end, hopefully our bottom line is good enough that we can go out and make some improvements.
Our fifth question will go to Dawn first. The water treatment facility has been an issue that city council has grappled with for a long time. Explain the problem with the water treatment facility, and what solutions are availa... what solutions are available, and what do you think is the best course of action for the city?
I'll be honest, I don't know a lot about the water treatment plant. I think that everything needs to be looking, looked at carefully. We need to find a course of action, start with it, go for pros and cons, and go for there, from there. Ultimately, St. John has to have water, and good water. So, yeah, there you go.
Okay, as far as the water treatment plant, I do know that it's very important to make sure that the chemicals are adjusted correctly for us to have drinking water and water that we need to use. So, with that being said, I do believe we do have somebody on that does take care of the water plant right now, and I think it would probably be very beneficial to every one of us if we were to look into maybe a class that that person could take to basically learn more knowledge about that water plant. The other thing, too, is maybe going back to where we purchased the water plant and see if there's any type of training that they offer that would be available for someone to take.
The water treatment plant, since I've been on council, we've, we've talked several times about getting, getting our high-volume usages off, that the city uses as far as our, as our parks, those use a lot of water, and those are pulling straight off the water treatment facility, you know? We, every three months, four months or so, we'd probably buy a truckload of salt, and it's, I think it's seven, eight thousand dollars. And if we cut down on that, we, we've got a bulk, bulk water handling facility that we can load out down there at the power plant, and, you know, that, that's something else where there's thousands and thousands of gallons being, being dumped out of there that are treated water, which doesn't really need to be treated. Some of those things, if we could get it off the water treatment facility, you know, that water's not going through there, and, and we don't, we don't have to treat that water, so, you know, that, it's, it's very expensive to run the water treatment facility. So, whatever we can do to not run water through there, then it's going to be, be better for the future of St. John.
To my knowledge, I really don't know if there is a problem with it or not, but I know it took a lot of money to get it going, so it needs to be ran properly. I mean, nobody wants to be worrying about their drinking water quality. You know, like Ryan said, maybe we can look into some different ways to making it more efficient, maybe find some ways so not as much water is going through it, reduce the cost, but that's what I know on it.
I don't think right now there's any major issues with it. Something that wasn't really touched on is I do know that we were not expecting to spend the kind of money that we're going to have to in the next year or so. You know, some of the things that they said would last ten years is not going to last ten years. There's a certain media in the vessels, roughly ninety thousand dollars to replace that. Those are some of the things that no one looked in the future for, which is something that's going to have to be taken care of, like I said, within the next year or two. But by doing some of the other stuff of taking some of our major water supplies off that doesn't really need to be treated, will help reduce the cost and maybe prolong the life of the new stuff that we have to put in it.
We're back to Misty to begin. The budget is a clear way for the city council to actually carry out activities that bring us closer to the goals you discussed earlier. We have citizens who have asked about specific items, particular streets, infrastructure, housing, population, but rather than ask you whether you support funding for one specific item, you know, because politicians always say yes, right? I'm going to ask, what do you think is the highest priority among discretionary items? In other words, there are items that cannot be changed. We have to pay Midwest Energy for the electricity that comes to our city, for example, but there are other discretionary categories that could be changed. One could be decreased a few thousand so that another can be increased. The question is, what is important enough to fund that you as a council member would advocate for that over another, also valid? advocate for that over another, also valid use of city funds?
Well, I believe that our infrastructure is very, very important. So, anything that has to do with our infrastructure, I think that we need to find the money to fix it correctly. As everybody knows, if your infrastructure is not there, your city's basically not there. So, that's the same way as, you know, any job. If you don't have your infrastructure down, then everything else kind of tumbles, and you don't really have anything that's good then. So, I think the infrastructure definitely is something that needs to have extra funding towards. As far as what department we could take away from, if I'm elected, I can tell you, but I don't know right now because I don't know what the budget is on each individual department.
Yeah, we touched on a little bit with water treatment facility. Something else is our streets. You know, we, the guys have been working, David's in charge of the streets, and if you drive down First Street, you know, you notice it's a lot better. A lot of our streets around town, if you look, the asphalt is above the curb line, and it's just cracking so bad. And they've done a pretty good job of grinding it down and getting it back with the flow line and going back over and sealing it. But, you know, it takes a long time, and it takes a lot of money, you know? Just doing First Street, they had quite a bit involved in that as far as funds, you know, there's probably $75,000 just in that, you know? And they're doing it themselves. Were to hire someone else to come in and do that, you know, it'd be considerable amount enough. You know, so streets is one of the main things that I see as a problem, that is needing fixed. As far as taking it away from any other fund, I don't know what to tell you on that, but that's what...
I think, like Ryan said, the streets are very important. I think our sewer system is very important, too. Not sure, I'm sure there's some weakness there. That's another thing. The streets are expensive. It's going to be expensive for the sewer lines, too. So, that's one of those things we're going to have to try to plan for to do anything substantial. And I don't know as far as taking money away from another sector, can't really say that for sure which one, or if any needed. Would have to look at the budget a little bit closer on that.
I think everybody's right with the infrastructure. You know, the streets, sewer, water lines, power lines, that stuff is all probably the number-one priority. And I don't think you could probably take away from any one fund to make up a difference in a year's time or 10 years' time. It's something you have to set money aside for, not do other projects in order to do it. I know that we do have some reserves and some capital outlay stuff that is designated for, you know, streets, sewers, that gets money put into it every year, budgeted for. And so those numbers there are what, basically, a person needs to continue to increase and look at in order to do some of these bigger projects.
As I've said before, because I don't know all of the figures and the budget, my biggest thing is the infrastructure with the sewer lines. I think that we need to go ahead, and if budget allows, take out the old copper pipes and replace them with PVC, as far as the drinking water. And sewers, we just need to make this town better in any way we can in a budgetary way. I think we should do it. Like I said, I'm open to suggestions, I'm open-minded, and I would love to hear constituents' issues and comments as far as all of this goes.
Ryan, the Fourth of July generates strong opinions for many. How many days should fireworks be set off, and what would you suggest as a penalty for noncompliance?
You know, I think we've had issues with this every single year that I've been on council, and I think if you go back and watch the video David Cutwright did of the last council meeting on the Fourth of July, I strongly suggested for two days of fireworks. You know, I think that's plenty. Sometimes you run into what day it lands on during the week, and if people can make it there. And I voted no for the three days of fireworks, but, you know, I thought it should be for two days. You know, there's no good way besides maybe doing it just one day. But, you know, I think it's a time that everybody likes spending together, and, you know, I understand there's, you know, animals out there, there's people that don't like it. I get it, you know? But it is a time that we can, you know, possibly bring in people to St. John, look at our town, see how nice it is and cleaned up, and you have to look at it more ways than one, I guess.
I think it's a tough issue because there's some people out there that would love to have it for five days, and there's others that wouldn't want it at all. So, I get it, but I think we've got to try to meet in the middle. I'd be a fan of two days, and I know that's kind of hard, too, depending on when the Fourth falls, you know? If it's in the middle of the week, well, some people's families are going to come on the weekend, so it makes it tough. And I understand that people want to spend time with their family, and some people really enjoy the holiday, and I do, too, but we have to be respectful of others as well. So, my vote would be, you know, maybe two days would be plenty. And as far as, you know, if we set it for two days and there's people going outside of that mark, I think we would need our police department to try to monitor that the best they can.
Everybody knows that it doesn't make any difference to me. I voted three days before, two days before, one day before. I get some people don't like it. Everybody blames me, and I'm perfectly fine with that because I enjoy the Fourth of July just as much as the kids do. But I think it's one of them deals that you take it year by year, case by case. You know, if it ends up on a Saturday, do it Saturday. If it ends up on a Thursday, do it Thursday, Friday. Two days, one day, three days, whatever works. It's one of them deals that, for our law enforcement, it's hard to enforce. You have 1,200 people, and if you've got seven, eight days of selling it, it's hard to stay on top of it. And, you know, they could run 24 hours a day and still not touch everybody that shoots them off when they're not supposed to. You know, like I said, it's one of them deals that I think it needs to be decided year by year.
My personal opinion, we celebrate Fourth of July for a reason. It should only be on the Fourth of July. Yes, I agree that everybody has the right to celebrate. That being said, you have to take into consideration animals, seniors, people that work. It's common courtesy for your neighbor, it's common courtesy for the town. The reason we have to celebrate Fourth of July is Independence Day. It's one day. That's just my personal opinion, and I think it should just be one day or one night.
I think it would depend on the year as well. I think it would depend on which day of the week it falls on. If it falls on a Friday, it's not going to hurt anything to have it Friday and Saturday. Like everybody says, you have family down. Three days, that's a little ridiculous, in my opinion, that's just a lot. But I do think that two days is okay. If it lands in the middle of a week, you know, most people don't have the next day off, so maybe if you have it on the Fourth of July, to respect the ones that have to work or get up early the next day, maybe cut it off at 10 o'clock rather than midnight on the Fourth, and then do your day on the weekend and leave it open until midnight.
The next question. Being a council member is more than coming to city council meetings. We've talked about the budget somewhat, and it is just one example of the complexity of the city that citizens entrust their citizens to understand. What would you do for continuing education as a city council member? What time do you have available to dedicate to continuing education?
I would definitely be up for continued education. I work at the bank, and I know my boss Chad was definitely for me doing this, so I think he would allow me the time, if I do need to take a day off, to get some more education on this. I know there's a lot of things out there to do, and I'm definitely open to continuing to get better.
I know that there are times that we do, on weekends, Saturdays, we've in the past had some training come into us. We're all looking at that. We even look at doing Saturdays for budget scheduling, stuff like that. Outside of council, every time I get my packet from Jamie, you know, I spend countless hours before council meeting making sure that, I've done all my research on every situation that's going to come up on Tuesday night. So, it does take a lot of time. Being a business owner, I am allowed more to come and go as I please and attend stuff like that, so I'm all for continuing education as far as city goes.
As far as continuing education goes for me, I am a person that thinks that knowledge is power. Anything you can learn to better yourself, better your community, and better everything, I'm all for it. I have no problems learning new things. I am afforded a job where I am flexible. I think everybody should learn to better themselves and to better their community. So, as far as that question goes, I'm good with it.
As far as continuing education, I think that's very important. As everybody knows, rules change. As everybody knows, things continue to be different on a year-to-year basis, and so continuing education is the spot where you learn all of that type of education. I have to do continuing education for my job, and so I do know how important it is. So, yes, it is something that we do need to do. The other thing is, no matter what day it is, I have a really good staff that can usually take care of problems either on their own, or they can call me, and it's something between me on the phone and with them a little bit that we can get solved. So, that would leave any time open, basically, for me to do continued education.
As far as continuing education goes, I don't have a problem with it. You know, like Marshall said, we have met on the weekend before, and you just schedule it enough in advance that you make it work because you're doing it to better yourself, to better the town. And there's a lot of time that goes into this position, and you just have to give it 100%, and just do what's best for the town. And, you know, you want to give your kids what you were given when you grew up. Like I grew up and went to St. John to school, you know? It's a beautiful town, and you want to keep it that way.
Marshall will be the first to answer our next question. The city council has the position of authority to determine the strategic direction of the city. Do you believe that the city's strategic planning process is adequate, or do you have an opinion on what could be done differently to accomplish long-term planning?
Right now, I would say that our strategic planning is not adequate. We have been working for the last three, four months on changing that. Before I even got on council, and when I first got on council, there was always talk of having a strategic plan, and it always got pushed to the backside. Jamie has reached out for strategic planning. It comes at a pretty big cost if you hire it done, and so we have looked at trying to schedule it on weekends, evenings, outside of council meeting to do it ourselves and to set a long-term goal.
As far as strategic planning, in my opinion, city council has not done enough. I'm sorry if I make anybody mad, but this is just my opinion. I think that we need to look at what is coming up, what needs to be looked at, pros and Just as an example, the city, the fountain coming down. I don't think that there was enough planning beforehand. I don't think that there was enough pros and cons. I think we need to get back to details. What will happen, the goods and the bads, everything like that. And I think that in a lot of areas, that's where the city council needs to go in the future.
As far as strategic planning, I think that, I think it's very important that we do do that, and I feel like, I mean, I think city council as a whole knows exactly, the current city council, I feel like as a whole knows exactly where they need to be, and I feel like they are doing different, taking different avenues to get to that point. I sometimes feel like if maybe things were tabled a little bit longer, instead of making a decision right at the meeting, that maybe it would give you time to go back home and look over the budget and see if this is something that we really do need, unless it's a time constraint, of course. But that way, you can look at all the other details that come into play, like, does it involve insurance? Does it involve another person? Does it involve more hours on the staff? Does it involve another staff member to do it? Different things like that, and just see where it fits in at.
As far as strategic plan goes, you know, we've looked into it, and we're planning to do a strategic plan, and I'm very much in favor of it. The plan is just to wait until the new council gets on in January and figure out a strategic plan, because if you start a strategic plan right now, then the new council gets on, then you might change a bunch of stuff. So, as far as the strategic plan goes, you know, you basically, year to year, you have to know how much road you're going to pave, or how much sewer line you may replace. You know, or as far as, you know, cop vehicle, you know, we don't even have to talk about that because it's already planned in the budget in the years previous.
Yeah, I think it's a great move to get a strategic plan in place. We need to do our best to identify the weaknesses so we can make plans accordingly. And like Ryan said, when we have an issue, well, it's hopefully already kind of in our plan, so we can go ahead and take care of it.
Okay, so Marshall answered that one first, right? Dawn, oh, it's... Okay, this is our last question for the evening. How do you differentiate between the role of city council versus the role of city administrator?
Wow, there's a great question. I'll be the first to admit, I have a lot of learning to do where that comes forth. I think as a city council, we all need to work together, period, with our city administrator. Our city administrator was elected by our city council for a reason. I'm great with compromising. Get out the different issues and go from there. I'm great with compromising, get out the different issues and go from there. Have an open mind, have some common sense. You know, everybody's got to work together. If we don't work together for St. John as a city council and a city administrator, then our town is not going to flourish, and I have such great hopes for St. John in the future. Did I answer the question? Carolyn? Okay.
Okay, so I feel like... Repeat the question. Yeah.
The question is, how would you differentiate between the role of city council versus the role of city administrator?
Okay, sorry, I kind of got off there. Okay, I think the city administrator should be able to basically tell people that they can do certain things without the city council. You know, let's say it's up to a $500 budget or a $1,000 budget that she can okay the employees to. I think that being the city administrator, that small stuff should not have to go through city council, that she should be able to do that, which would save city council a lot of time. I think it just needs to be devoted back to her. And then when she comes into city council, she being Jamie, of course, you know, she does help direct, you know, as far as reminding us where the budget is and stuff. She does help with that. And so I think that's her main part and role in city council. I don't think she really has a huge role in city council other than taking the notes down and keeping us in direction. But as the administrator, her role is more important on a daily basis.
You pretty much have to put in a certain amount of trust into your city employees, like Jamie as your administrator, to handle the day-to-day stuff. That's why she was put in that position. You know, you can't micromanage every little thing. And you just have to let them come to you if there's a big issue and talk about it on Tuesday night or whenever council meeting is.
I think when you identify, you know, who your city administrator is, you give her the confidence to go out and him or her, which is her right now, but you let her go do her job, don't micromanage her, and trust in her that she's going to take care of what she needs to take care of. And if there is an issue that she feels comfortable and that she needs to bring to the council, that she's going to do it. And I think that we have a city administrator that currently that will do that.
I think it's basically the same as everyone else. We have made that position available and we have put a person in that position to take care of the day-to-day operations and to look over the rest of our employees, rather than five city council members and a mayor running around trying to see what everybody's doing. We all have a job to do. Our job is to be in there to make the big decisions on Tuesday nights, not to make the decisions day-to-day and micromanage. So I think that's how you differentiate.
Were there any other questions submitted by citizens? I think the question was, do you attend League of City meetings? That might be a part of the question maybe for continuing education, but that would be one way of representing the city or getting additional education.
The last few opportunities that I've had, I have not been able to attend just with everything going on, but I would like to attend one of these days.
I'm very open to attending something like that, but I have not.
Yeah, same with me, I have not, but I'm definitely open to it.
I have not, but I'm looking forward as a possible new-elect city council member on learning as much as I can as far as the League of Municipalities go. Like I've said before, knowledge is power. Anything I can do to make St. John a better community and a town, I am more than for it.
I have not attended one. In fact, I'm not opposed to it, be more than happy to, you know, depending on the timeframe of when they are in my schedule.
Those are the planned questions that we had, unless there are any other questions to be submitted from the floor. We thank everyone for both coming to listen tonight and for our candidates for their willingness to answer our questions. Good luck to everyone and thank you for attending.